I know you've got somebody in the room running stuff.
He's in the meeting.
He's sitting there right now.
Yeah, he wants to run for me going home.
All right, it's six o'clock, time to call Mount Pleasant Municipal Plan and Commission together. Uh, first of all, we'll have both Johnny Rickard's invitation and Jeff Brown for the pleasure of him. We bow with him, please. Our God and our Father in Heaven, we humbly bow before you at this time to thank you for the many blessings, Father, that we received from you. Father, we thank you for the greatest blessing we could ever gotten, that your Son, the land and the high holy cross, great one, listen. Father, we thank you for that sacrifice. Father, we thank you for this country that we live in and the many freedoms that we enjoy. Father, we pray that you would bless our leaders and that they would turn to you for guidance and the decisions they make to keep this country free. Father, we thank you for our military, for whatever they put in forth, put forth to keep our freedoms in place in foreign lands and extend those freedoms to those foreign lands. Father, we thank you for our men and women that wear the uniforms and badges of our community that watch over us and take us here. We pray your blessings be with each one of them, Father, and they will return home safely to their job, to their families each day after they complete their shifts. Father, we ask that your blessings be with this community here at Mount Pleasant, that you would bless the people that live within. Father, guide us tonight as we conduct business in this community and the planning commission, that you would, we would turn to you for guidance and you would be able to give us that guidance, Father, if we make these decisions, that they would be those that would be most beneficial to the people that live here. Father, we ask now that you go with us, watch over us, guard, guide, and direct us. In the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Yes, amen.
The President, the United States of America, and in this republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in this world, with every religion, with all its laws. Let the minister reflect. Everyone's in attendance tonight on the planning commission, please. Out of number three, available approval of the agendas for the night. I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda. I have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Out of number four, approval of many prior meeting, August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion been made in fact. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, plan approved?
None.
Out of number six, I'll turn this over to Robert.
Thank you, uh, for all the presence tonight. Appreciate you being here. Uh, the first item on the agenda is rezoned request, PC oh nine, one zero one nine, rezoned. Um, this is administrative request and it's out of number six on the agenda. Um, I'm asking the, the administrative, we're asking the planning commission to review, uh, for approval, uh, correction to the municipal zoning map for Mount Pleasant. Propose changes, uh, correct oversight dealing with this specific piece of property on the south end of town, South Main. Uh, zoning designations from the prior zoning map during the update that we had in November two thousand and eighteen. Uh, eleven oh nine, South Main Street is the area under consideration. It's, it's currently zoned R one low density residential, and this was where the oversight occurred. It is right next to an industrial zone and, uh, the cemetery along with that piece of property was zoned previously agriculture, uh, and since we removed agricultural zoning from our zoning ordinance, the next base zone is R one. So that reflected in the change there initially. Uh, so it was an oversight, uh, very slim piece of property, um, and it's, uh, situated directly between an industrial and a, um, well, residential, uh, area. So, uh, once again, we're just asking consideration from the board to, um, for this mission as a rezoned request administratively to change, uh, that oversight so we can get our map corrected and up to date along with the other zoning changes that we've already had thus far. The owner is actually not present, I do not believe, um, but, uh, I, I advised him that there was no need for them to be here since this is administrative request, um, and I hope that's okay with the board. It's, uh, it's always been used as a, um, commercial entity, uh, I believe, uh, situated between R and Cemetery and the town and property. So that's where the property lies and, uh, right now, uh, it, it's currently not, uh, in use, but, um, we would probably utilize it and say, we want to utilize the plan there or something.
Any discussion coming board?
I'll make a motion, we think this board, the board federation for the rezon, to help make that through, uh, straighten this situation out of the oversight. I'll second.
Motion been made in fact. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Number seven, ma'am, please.
Have a question on the last one, please.
Uh, are you signed up to, to speak?
Signed up.
All right, we'll go, I'll, I'll let you go ahead and speak at this time. Who want to come forward and speak?
Hey, by the way, I'm representing R and Cemetery. Uh, if we rezoned this light industrial, what I understand is going to be rezoned in a year's time, say if, if this company files out, then does this continue to be a light industrial area?
Correct.
Correct. Do we have any control over what comes in, then, if the next company that comes in?
Yeah.
We do.
Yeah, they'd be on the zone.
There's certain requirements that need to be addressed.
Yeah, they have certain requirements, so they would have to follow.
I understand this is going to be like a, just a storage area for dumpsters, is what we understand this is going to be.
I have no idea. I haven't spoke specifics with you. I haven't spoke specifics with you, but he still has to come before, uh, my office with any type of views proposed.
All right, thank you.
Out of number seven?
Uh, no annexation request.
Number eight, I'll turn it back to Robert.
Um, number eight is out of number, um, PC zero nine, one zero one nine, is a site plan approval request, and it comes, uh, through from the owner, Robert Savage, um, specifically speaking of property at sixty-nine seventy-six Industrial Park Road. Reason for the request is for further development for parking and storage. Um, the board is probably familiar, but I kind of give you a, um, an idea of where this is located. It's American Trailer Sales, um, currently situated sixty-nine seventy-six Industrial Park, and the owner, Mr. Savage, uh, there's a, um, and the name escapes me, I apologize, but there's a trucking, uh, company.
Robbie D. Wood.
Robbie D. Wood, I apologize. Robbie D. Wood, um, operates out of that business as well. And right now, currently, what you have is an existing gravel lot that they built it, um, a couple of other, I think maybe smaller structures there on the side. Mr. Savage proposed, is proposing, um, and asking for a site plan approval through this board based off the fact that he wants to extend that parking area, that storage area, approximately one point three nine acres, um, and at the rear of the property to allow for additional storage and trailer movement on the property. The request comes as a proposal for a church parking pad. Of course, our text, zoning ordinance, actually specifically speaks to any new parking lot, what it is, uh, supposed to be built of, which is concrete asphalt or equivalent. This was shared with Mr. Savage, Mr. Rhodes via comments as you've got the review. Um, there were other things that were, um, addressed on the comments as well. The site plan, to my knowledge, has not changed, is as presented. I have not received any updated versions. I did receive the comments, reply back from Mr. Savage, I think that I supplied y'all as well upon the revisions, uh, and that's how comments were addressed. Um, I'm not, unless the board wants me to, I'm not going to cover every one of those, but the, um, he, he addressed basically comments in verbiage. Um, there is no swell that I'm aware of, um, it's one point three nine acres. There's no, um, of course, the site plan shows there's no drainage accommodation, um, and myself and Loson Associates have communicated over this, will, um, prior to the comments going out. And if you look at, let's see if I can find it here, if you look at... Trying to find a specific comment because I want to point you in that direction, so just give me a second. Okay. It's going to be number thirteen, specifically number thirteen item. Comment was all street parking areas shall be constructed of concrete, asphalt, pavement, or equivalent, straight up on the text. With the proposal, consideration would be, would be given after discussion with Loson Associates, uh, we, we agreed to give, we, we agreed that a more favorable consideration could possibly be given if they would consider, um, paving or concrete the entrance, exit, and the turn aisles on the proposed new parking area, storage area. The reason being because it's a more substantial material, holds up longer, um, and of course you see the reply, uh, Mr. Savage, uh, there. So, um, the, the zoning text specifically calls for asphalt pavement, as you see in thirteen, uh, or equivalent. And, um, considering that we already have an existing gravel lot there, um, we thought it, um, fair enough to, um, send the comment out saying that it would be looked at more favorably if they would consider the entrance and exit and turn aisles, uh, maybe not necessarily all the parking lot. But there's no correction to say that's being done or even being pursued at this point. The actual reply back indicates that it would be done in phases according to what the reply said as from Mr. Savage, but the site plan certainly does not indicate anything for church. And that's where we're at with that. There was some landscaping that was also called out, um, and, uh, the reply was, um, being surrounded by trees, um, I believe they don't necessarily feel that, that it would be, uh, a need for landscaping, but if I'm, if you clear out one point three nine acres at the rear, as indicated, that is proposed, I'm not so sure that the east portion of that is not going to be visible to residential areas on Hoover Mason.
I would agree with that.
And that was specifically called out in comments because of the buffer requirements there for a lot that is owned industrial versus to a residential. But once again, no changes were identified or submitted on the site plan. Mr. Savage is present, um, in the audience, if the board has any questions.
Yes, I would like to speak if that'd be okay, unless you all have made a decision.
No, we're in.
Well, I'm, uh, to begin to, uh, first I want to say thank you very much for spending some time here tonight. Thank you very much for spending some time here tonight. I know y'all have jobs of your own, places to be other than here. Thank you so much for doing this. I do have two identical sets of pictures. These pictures are of the site and of the surrounding neighborhood, the people who run big trucks, traders, and the lots they park them on, and what those materials are. I would like you to look at those, please. Would that be okay? You'll probably recognize some of these buildings and facilities because they're right here on Mount Pleasant. Thank you. I guess my main question for Robert is, Robert, did you ever go out to the site and look at?
I've been out to the site, sir, uh, but not recently, no.
Okay.
I have been out to the site.
Well, we never saw you out there, Robert. None of the, you know, we have people there twenty-four hours a day, around the clock. Nobody saw you out there. I never saw you, and I think if you visited the site, we would have been able to make this a lot simpler.
Well, I mean, it still has to go before the planning commission, even if I have visited the site, it would still have to come before them for any type of approval or disapproval.
Absolutely, Robert. The reason I asked about Robert coming to the site is if you stood out there and you looked east, you will see that that is old strip mine ground and the residential area is there off Hoover Mason Road, but there's fifty yards of trees between those houses in this site. You can't see it. That's what I wanted him to notice.
Well, I did go out there yesterday.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I took a, a look at what's out there, and, uh, to actually see the place that they're wanting to, uh, put the, I understand, church, pack it down and put limestone gravel on the back.
Yes, sir.
And it, you would have to fly a helicopter over it, you'd see it. It is surrounded by trees. You probably couldn't ever actually ever see that in any shape, form, or fashion from the road. I, I, I couldn't have seen it if I hadn't walked back in behind and actually looked at the trucks and stuff. The existing lot is limestone gravel, I'm assuming.
Yes, sir. For twenty-five years, that's what they've done there.
Uh, I, I work and backed a little bit of what the mayor said last week here, that we can be too stringent on some of this stuff. And, uh, I went around Mount Pleasant myself looking at parking lots that we've got. And we've got a mixture. We've got some that's, uh, concreted, some that's paved, uh, some right in the middle of town that's gravel. Uh, one right beside the grill, the Ricky Auto Parts, that's a parking lot there, so that's a gravel parking lot. Uh, I don't want to discourage growth in Mount Pleasant by being so stringent that we limit what people can do. So, uh, is that now, the, the buffers and things, I, Robert, I, I looked, like I said, you'd about have to fly a helicopter over there to look and see where this lot's going to be. And I understand that with phosphate mines, the old phosphate, the way they dig pits to get that out, that's what's back there, and I wouldn't let back there for the snakes. That place has really growed up pretty bad.
I'm, I understand what, I understand what you're saying, though, but we've set up here a year, year and a half pre-doing these ordinances and stuff. I have to agree with the mayor, too. You know, we, we probably made mistakes and stuff, but we all know we would. So, but, uh, you know, the location of this thing is, you know, I, you know, I, I've been out there and I, I know J.R. that runs and stuff out there, you know, Robbie D. Wood and stuff. My only problem is with this, if we start this, where's it going to lead to? I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem, you know, if, if, if we get it somehow that, you know, you're going to do it in phases and stuff, but somewhere along the line, you know, we, we got to incorporate power on this. If it doesn't not, we set up here and we wasted a lot of time on this, and, uh, sure, it's several lots around town that's gravel and this and that, but, and we move forward, you know, and, you know.
Well, may I interject just one thought, sir?
Yes, sir.
We all wear size fifteen shoes? No, nobody here wears seventeen shoes. We all get a different pair that fits us. Parking lots are the same thing. Some parking lots have the public on them, they have cars coming on them. Yes, they should be of the quality you're talking about. But big trucks, sir, just a little bit, let me finish, please. If you looked at those pictures, you will see that every lot in our area that uses big trucks, gravel, always. And why do they do that? Because it's cost effective, it's business effective, that's what you need to do. And what really should happen here, you need to, what in my opinion, you need to amend your ordinance slightly, to put some definitions in as to what is a parking lot, what is it used for, and then those parking lots that require gravel and concrete should be. Those parking lots that can suffice, and if they're cost effective with church gravel, that's what needs to be there. And that's why your trucking industry in this area uses that because it's cost effective. If you made, if you made these other people concrete those lots, you know, one of them's a forty acre lot. Now, I've got figures in there that show a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for concrete for one acre. Well, how many acres in Mount Pleasant are worth a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars? How many acres on, you know, out in, you know, out here where Vector is at, that's a forty acre lot? If you, if you didn't spend a hundred and fifty-four thousand acre out there, you'd be out of business. You couldn't do it. That's why I'm saying you need to maybe revise your code just ever so slightly and define what is a lot and what is that lot used for. Those that qualify for gravel should be gravelled. Those that need to be concrete and asphalt should be concrete and asphalt. And what we're asking you for is to say, hey, that's a gravel lot, that's all it needs. It doesn't need to be concrete. It doesn't need another driveway coming in. It's been there for twenty-five years. We have no public access at all. The only people that come in there is J.R. and a trucking company and some drivers, and they're happy. They don't complain. The only person that complained is sitting right there, and he's complaining because of your ordinance, it's his job, that's what he's supposed to do. He's supposed to say it don't fit the ordinance, by the ordinance, in my opinion.
Well, I'm, uh, of course, Robert's complaining, I don't think Robert should blame you, Robert's just doing his job.
Tell him you want, he's doing his job.
He is, and he's just doing his job. But I, but I do understand that maybe these parking lots, some parking lots are for different things, that some parking lots are stored parking lots that is public access and things of that nature. Most of these, uh, businesses, industrial type businesses, once they got that lot done or any, we can't just all have access to that lot, we can't. It's not for us, it's for the business of that, use of that business, and if there any way that we can differentiate, differentiate between a public parking lot and one used in industrial setting, or it's not really a parking lot, it's, it's part of the...
You can call it the ordinance, it's not a parking lot. Storage is going to have its own require, uh, its own criteria as well. So if you're going to, if you're going to differentiate, that has to be done with the change and amendment to the zoning ordinance, and that's the planning commission that's going to have to decipher how you're going to apply that.
Was it something we should take and maybe consider here because it is going to come before us other times?
I mean, it's totally a complaint.
And maybe there could be a difference between, say, a restaurant or storefront whether it's public access.
Can I ask a question to this board? Okay, would you allow a brand new industrial facility to come in and not pave their parking lot? No, you wouldn't.
And what do you do, Robert?
I'm not, this is not argumentative, I asked the board a question, so...
Yes, sir, I understand.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just presenting something to you, you presented something to me. So, FTS?
Yeah, you're, you're right.
You're right.
Would you allow a brand new facility to come in and create a parking lot to gravel, for trucks?
Yeah, I sure would. I wouldn't want you to come in, Robert, if you don't, we probably wouldn't.
I mean, you, we've got to make that differentiation.
We're, we're, we're trying to work with you here.
Yeah.
We're, we're trying to work with you here on it.
So, the board would have to make that differentiation.
Like the mayor said, we're, we're not up here to run any business away from here. I, we've been accused, you know, of, of trying to run stuff away, we're not, but we sit here a year and a half or so and, and done, and, and the mayor of the town right now sat on this board with us and went through these changes and stuff, and we said it's a big problem, but we're, we're here trying to work with you and stuff on this.
Well, I, I agree with you.
And we, you know, we, we taking a lot of heat. We're all appointed to sit on this board up here.
And that's, sir, that's why I thank you all when I came up here for talking about it.
Your, your trucking industry always is supposed to be out front because we're trucks, you know, you know, put us out there, we don't need to do this, we're big trucks and stuff coming in and so forth, Bob.
Well, wait a minute, just a minute, give me another minute, please. He asked a good question, would you let a trucking company come in here and not concrete the driveway? Absolutely, I would. They wouldn't come in if you don't. If you look, if you looked at those pictures, you'll see that we went around and we took pictures of everything in this area, and most of those are gravel. The reason they're gravel is it's cost effective. If you make it concrete and put that high cost on there, they ain't coming here, sir, they're just not going to because the cost is too high. They'll go to Columbia, and some of those pictures are of Columbia, of brand new sites. What I'm trying to tell you is we really need to look at parking lots and give a better definition for what they're being used for because you have to be cost effective in any business. And I'm not trying to argue with you, sir, or anybody else.
Oh, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not here to argue with you on any of that.
Right, and you're not, but I'm trying to point out.
But I understand, but Robert, Robert's doing his job.
Just a statement, please.
Yeah.
And one of the pictures that I did not see is the trucking down on Bluegrass, down at the end, for you to try and track. Do you know how many people, they actually called and complaining about that company over there with them trucks and them gravel over there? And the main reason, their biggest complaint is because it depreciates their property and their value, and it hurts the community. I, I understand what, I mean, I do understand what you're saying, too, but if it's going to bring down the value of my house and where I live at, then you're still going to keep it away.
I don't, uh, good point. You know, the, the location you're at and stuff, and with the gravel lot and stuff, it's fine, I would think would be fine and stuff. And with, with what they've done, with the landfill and stuff, you know, and you having a gravel parking lot, I don't have a problem with that, and I don't think nobody on this board would have a problem with it and stuff. But we, we, we have got to follow somewhere of what we set forward for this town to move forward, I mean, we, you know, we want to work with you, and, but we don't want to come up here and, and, and you tell us, well, you need to change this and you need to change that, that is exactly what we did.
Well, we're trying to suggest that, do you a little modification?
I think I might can mainstream this a little bit for everybody, but, you know, what's on the agenda today is a site plan review. So, the site plan needs to comply with your zoning ordinance as it's written, but I do agree with Mr. Savage here, he's, what he's asking for truly is a zoning amendment, which is not on the agenda today.
Right.
So if you want to consider, you know, as the planning commission is trying to change and make differentiations between parking lots and storage or, you know, what have you, you have that power to go back through your zoning amendment or your zoning ordinance that you drafted and used to meet the commission to change that if you feel like it's too strict or if it's not having the effect that you intended. You can do that, but that's not what's on the, on the agenda today. Today is the site plan review as presented to you in the plans up there. If he's asking for a variation from that, you know, if that's within the plan, which I'm not sure that it is, but that's what you're considering, if the plan, does that plan comply with your zoning ordinance as it's written today?
And also, I'd like to interject, correct me here, if you want to, so legal non-conforming use, so the board has, um, leeway, um, as far as saying this plan has to meet the exactness of the dump text. It struck into my attention, it's, it is a legal non-conform use, so you do have that ability and leeway of the board to consider this site.
Without making a larger precedent for future redevelopment.
Yeah.
So, I mean, he's, he's got a legally, assume it's legally permitted and held site. So, as that, it can expand in the same manner it has been, but it's up to you to grant that waiver.
So, as it's presented, as it's in that plan, it's...
I have a further discussion. So, the, the phase aspect of this, the first phase of going in with church?
Yeah.
I particularly always get worried when I have phased approaches to something.
I understand.
Not knowing, how, how long is it gonna be church? What's the intended length of time that it may or may not be gravel? We could approve this and it remains church.
No, that's not our intention. The reason for the church and...
I, I understand that it's gonna be your base.
We have to have the base, and then we have to crush it and compact it, then the gravel.
Sure.
And I, I wrote that out, as phase one, phase two, because of those, that's the way we're gonna do it, or that's what we hope to do.
But finished product would be gravel.
That's what it should be.
The other, the other concern I have is, it shows on the site plan that you plan to remove all the, the growth up to the property line. And while I understand there's a, you know, a, a pretty high density of trees between you and the residential lots next to it, what I would prefer to see done is a natural 20-foot buffer left along that line.
I think there will be, the fence line currently was put in by the builders of that property many years ago, and I believe there's 15-foot on both sides of the fence that are buffers, and those were the buffers that were there. We intend to do the same thing, just follow the fence line as it currently is, and whatever that buffer is, that's what we hope to do. Now, we haven't had a surveyor out there to actually determine where those lines are at, because it got kinda put on hold. We, we did get a permit to go ahead and knock down the trees and the overgrowth, so we could even see what's there, because it's such rough ground back there from, from the strip mining over all the years. Couldn't, you couldn't even walk in there, determine anything. But we did knock it down, we did get it leveled out, engraved properly, so that there is drainage, that was done by basam excavating. The next phase would have been the church, been the gravel, but it got stopped because of this, not, not necessarily Robert, but because of this ordinance that you have, or a rule, whatever it is. So we've been waiting for a month now to see where are we gonna go? You know, are we gonna be able to complete phase one, and then phase two? And then if we ever get enough money? You know, if, if I take that 1.3 acres in the back, and concrete that 8 inches thick, and leave the, leave the 3 acres in the front gravel, how's that gonna look? Not very good. So I'd almost have to do the 3 acres in the front, too, and then the driveway. So now we'd be talking about five or six acres of concrete at a cost of $150,000. Pretty tough money, you know, it's just, you know, it, if you're a small business like I am, we don't have dollars to throw away. We have to look at every dollar we spend and get a return on it. If we can't get a return on it, then we gotta say, well, we can't do this. You know, we have to do something else, we just gotta do what... And I'm not trying to say anything about the board, I really, really appreciate all that you do, and I thank you so much for being here on your own time. But, I guess we're gonna stuck. When Johnny was out there, he, he made a comment that really sunk in my brain. And, you know, he talked about common sense. Common sense is what we have to always be looking at. And yes, we have rules and regulations, because we can't be experts in everything. We don't know what the best thing to do oftentimes is, so we look at our rules and regulations and try to make the best decisions possible. And that's what common sense is about. One of the, one of the people I know of, I mean, you all heard his name before, too, Benjamin Franklin. He once said, "Common sense? It ain't common." We need to apply some of that here, in my opinion. And I do thank you so much for listening to me and looking at pictures, and whatever you decide to do, Bob's happy with, and I'll look with. Thank you, appreciate it.
Much appreciated, sir.
Chair, do you mind if I speak just a second?
Not a problem.
I'm gonna have, Kate and I had a long discussion today about this, and I'm just gonna be frank with everybody here. We made a mistake. We need to start over. And I'm gonna be the one that you're gonna have to look at and hold responsible for. I personally went to that lot myself, to see what we needed and what was there. Mr. Witt, I went and had to get the helicopter, know this piece of property is set up. And right now, that piece of property is a piece of dump property, and those of us who were raised in this community know exactly what that is, and it means this world nothing. It's holding this world together. And those of you that live here and have lived here for a while, know that's reality. Now, in my opinion, having served on this board, all that this gentleman has asked for is a variance to our ordinance. And as this commission, you have the ability to do that, at this point in time. Again, for a piece of property that's holding this world together, not much more.
I, I agree with you there, I agree with you a wholeheartedly.
And I'll do all I can to help.
But, my, my question to you is, metal for our town here.
Yes, sir.
And like I said, we're all pointing on this board.
That's right.
Are, are we gonna hear the speech every time somebody comes up and wants a variance on something?
I think, I think right now, as, as Kate and I discussed today, and Kate up like it was best, and I should do, too, is I think we went too far, okay? I think we need to back up and look at what we've got. I think some people made some great recommendations tonight. And if it's y'all's concern, if the mayor's coming in here trying to push anything out, I'll walk out this door right now, and I'll give y'all my...
I, I, I...
Because I'm, all I'm saying is, is if we need to be very pro-business, we need to understand that there are going to be ordinances that we need to give variances to for certain reasons. And it appears to me from the write-up that this young man is doing, is he's addressed what we've asked him to address within the ordinance that was not truly done, and he did exactly what we've asked him to do. He addressed what was not properly done within that ordinance. And if he gets beyond that, then it needs to be tabled, no one ever will, I'll let you say whatever you need, sir.
Thank you, sir. Well, I, I think, I think you've got some options here, just to clarify what I think the mayor was trying to say, as a, we knew, drafting this new ordinance, that we'd have several properties that would not be in compliance with the new rules. So, the state law, and I'll let the attorney correct me where I'm wrong, 'cause I'm sure I'll mistake something, but there are provisions at the state level for legal non-conforming uses, and we've got those provisions reflected in your zoning ordinance as well. When it comes to surfacing, parking lots, landscaping, besides, things of that nature, you are the body that can grant a waiver, technically not a variance, but a waiver from the design criteria, for specific issues, either existing buildings, a limitation of the land, something along those lines that the applicant needs to present to you. I think, what I believe is owner has made his case that, you know, the values here may not justify that kind of investment, that's really not something you can leverage a waiver on, it needs to be more physical in nature. We can't be financiers of redevelopment at this point, so, but, you know, the parking lot that's being expanded is out of the public view. That may have some weight with you, this is your decision, it's not mine. We, Robert and I tried to work towards a halfway point. In my experience, being in Robert's shoes, in Lebanon and in Hendersonville, an application like this would not get very far along for the entirety of the lot. But we have, I have worked with people in the past for the trapways through a tractor-trailer storage lot, or a warehouse site, something like that. So there are some options. I think we've heard from the applicant, I don't wanna put you in an awkward situation, but you do have some opportunities to either hold them to the standard that you feel is appropriate, or grant a waiver where you feel it's needed. So if you have any questions along those lines, I'm happy to answer if I can.
What about the SWIP and the T-Deck approvals, are any of those required?
For the size of the lot, the size of the disturbance, I don't...
1.39 acre, over an acre lot.
Something they would need is required. Something from T-Deck, which is beyond our...
That would be one, I mean, I, I would be agreeable to a gravel lot back there, you know, contingent upon maintaining a 20-foot buffer between any residential zone, whether that's a natural buffer that's already there that's left, or something that's installed after the fact. But, you know, I'm hesitant to move forward with anything, knowing there's SWIP requirements and T-Deck requirements that have not been addressed.
Well, and to be clear, we, we couldn't override those requirements if we wanted to, they would still need to present that T-Deck, get their approvals.
So we're, so that we're, that, that, the question that arises in my mind, I mean, is the site plan ready to be approved without those, those?
It comes down to your preferred procedure, a lot of times, the T-Deck approval after a local site plan approval, and before the CO or the permits are issued, they have to show proof of the T-Deck file.
Did you follow the discussion?
I, I only have one thing to say myself, and, and I have, I, I know the building site and stuff like that out there. Don't have a problem with them putting a gravel lot and stuff out there and everything, you know, and the location, it is and everything, but, you know, I'm, I'm in agreement with Eric, you know, as far as everything being right on, on the site plan and stuff, with T-Deck and stuff, but right now, it's legal to hold us, we're, we're only to hear to approve the site plan tonight, and anything else after that has to come through another meeting, correct?
If, if you're talking about, you know, changing your zoning ordinance, that would be a totally different, probably, number of meetings to do that. If you are specifically asking about what's going for T-Deck, you know, what Will just said.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just saying, what, what we're concerned about now is number eight, is by the, the site plan approval.
Right. No, yeah, this is, like Will said, because it's a non-conforming use, you can approve, you can hold them to the standard, and you can grant a waiver if you feel like that's necessary. Or you could, you know, approve the site plan with a condition, if that's, if you felt strongly about needing an addition to, or a change to the site plan as presented. You have, you really have a lot of options in this situation.
Well, I make motion, Will, that we approve this site plan with the waiver, to be able to use gravel instead of having to pave or concrete. Contingent on the buffer area, that there is only one section there that would provide any type of problem whatsoever, and, and I think they could work through that. The rest of it, like I said, it, maybe it ain't get through there or something, but it's, but nobody's really gonna see that. But I make motion, and the fact that it is out of the public...
I, I don't agree with that.
I mean, the public's really never gonna see this. Now, if I got this worded the way that this needs to be worded.
But, can you clarify, are you, you're making a motion to approve the site plan as presented...
With a waiver, allowing him to use gravel, church and gravel on that parking lot.
That's how it's presented, right.
It has, is there any paving in the entrance going in and out?
That's not on this.
So the only condition you're adding is a...
20-foot buffer.
A 20-foot buffer, where he was talking about, there's one section there where the gulps are, where there may not be, that there might have to be a buffer, but allowing him to use the limestone, church and limestone gravel, like the rest of the parking lot is. Whatever got that worded the proper way.
Which, where is the buffer that goes?
Each side, each side.
But Johnny, the residential lot.
And just, and tip on the stake.
And contingent upon that.
Is that acceptable to me? Is that your motion, Johnny?
Sounds like a motion.
I think so.
I'll second your motion.
Motion's been made and seconded, although the fans say aye.
Aye.
All right, Robert. Number C.
PC 091019, site plan two. Owner of Murray County Industrial Development Board, represented here tonight by two persons, I believe, Mr. Jerry Reynolds, which is the architect, and Mr. Al Kerstein, Mount Pleasant Power, representative here of the site plan tonight. They're proposing a review for approval to the site plan for 102 Charles Tisher Range, which is a cherry glen. And it's gonna be a speculat building, 50,000 square foot. And of course, this is a site plan presented for future development, or for further development Now, once again, just for the board, this is a speculative building, will have no occupants until it sells. And the rendering is shown as, as on site plan. We had a couple of comments based off the site plan review, and they've addressed each of those comments, attending to your packet. They revised the site plan to indicate provided 50 side, 50 rear, and 50 front setback is required in that particular zone. And the only landscaping that you'll notice on the site plan is gonna be shown around a detention area. And the reason for that is because unknown tenant. We didn't, the owner understands that, you know, unknown tenant can come in and change the landscaping, they are aware, the irrigation is required, but that, they're asking for this board to look at this as it is, which is a speculat building with no tenant, they'll install the detention area, and develop the site out, and construct the building, being a shell, and a new tenant will come in and have to present a site plan to the planning commission identifying landscaping, parking lot design, any further treatment to the exterior. And that's, that's what we're here on tonight, in reference to this particular one, and like I said, Mr. Reynolds is here. Do you have any questions for him? Mr. Al Kerstein is here as well.
Pretty much what we get on the last building we've got, sir.
It is, actually, they're doing the landscaping around the detention area here, what's shown on the plan, so that's even more than what we had on the previous speculative. So, the, that's the reason a lot of the site plan is not identified, because you have no occupants. A lot of particulars to the site plan. A SWIP has been submitted, T-Deck was submitted on August 23rd, 2019, they're waiting approval. Also, the erosion prevention set of control plans have their priority included with this in the middle, they had this as well, and they were submitted to T-Deck on August 23rd, 2019, as well, waiting approval.
Good discussion for the board.
No, I make motion, we're approving the site plan as submitted, motion to make the first site plan review, and second, although the same.
Aye. Number C.
Uh, C is PC 091019, site plan three. Owner Landmark Ceramics is proposing a site plan approval, a review tonight, for a...
Owner Landmark Ceramics is proposing a site plan approval, a review tonight for a development of an outside storage area in front of the facility. And that's what's presented, been prepared and presented to you tonight. I have the contractor of said storage and also the engineer, Mr. Vick is present for UST, with any questions, concerns the board may have. Once again, this is a site plan indicative of a very large storage area on the front section of the building there.
This is just expansion of the current storage there, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, and...
It was in the previous plan.
It was identified as future development in the previous plan, that's correct, yes. They're showing landscaping on page C 2.1. If you have any questions about the landscaping. Drainage casks have been provided through Loson Associates, the stormwater, Mr. Black, he's not here tonight, but he's confirmed with Will and he does not have any issues with the, with the submitted, as far as drainage calculations and stormwater and stuff.
So the landscaping that was added, that voluntarily added, is correct?
That was to...
That's on the opposite side of the, on the opposite side of the road, further, I guess, to the...
Yes, sure.
To the north?
That's correct, yes, sure. And that was to, that voluntary landscaping was done in reference to existing stores that they have out there.
Correct.
Robert, in fact, the customer has also stated they would call it site.
If it's okay with the board's opinion.
The customer at Landmark have also stated they're gonna do some additional landscaping along with this down the road, I think to try, across the whole front of the building.
Right.
So they'll, I'm sure they'll come before y'all later on, but that'll be independent of our part of the project there, we're just pouring the concrete, so.
Right, and then if I was to go in...
Oh, I'm sorry. Ryan Evers of Evers Construction.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion from the board?
Yeah, they're doing it pretty well. I make motions we approve this site plan as submitted.
Motion's been made to approve the site plan as submitted. We have a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? All right. We'll move on to the next item. Number B.
This brings us to D, this is a designer review only, it's not a site plan, as indicated on the agenda. PC 091019.
Zero rev.
Zero rev, that's correct. The proposal is coming through the owner and also the construction company that will be taking on the work. They're proposing to demolish said building that exists and rebuild using the same footprint, not affecting any of the parking lot, not doing any parking lot work, specifically staying within the footprint of the new building. Based off design review, which I done, I addressed different issues in regards to what text suggests be a part of the plan. And I didn't, I just got the new version tonight on PDF, so I didn't have a chance to print it out, or this evening. But Mr. Hayes is here, and the Patel's is here, Mr. Hayes is with the construction company. The change that was made on the site plan, they did identify the zoning. One comment in particular was the facade of the building itself, the facing beam brick, and our design review guidelines say any side of the building that is facing a residential area or a public right of way needs to be of the same material as the front facade brick likewise. It has certain criteria in there. So that was mentioned in the comments. That has been changed, I just don't have proof of it. They are proposing to brick the entire outside of the structure at this point.
But you didn't know this?
That's what the plan's called for, and Mr. Hayes is here. If you have any questions, I want to, you know, make sure that's what the plan is.
You've seen the plan?
I have, I've seen it when they're on PDF, and like I said, it does indicate brick for the entire outside of the structure. There is no parking lot work. Also mentioned was some street landscaping, because that's in our design review guidelines, as well as landscaping around the dumpster area. But all y'all familiar with where the dumpster is situated? And under new construction, they will block in...
Just got to thank you very much.
Under the new structure, they will block in split placed block surrounding the dumpster along with a rivet metal front gate. So this is one copy here, like I said, I apologize, I definitely steer the structure a little bit.
I can make copies if you need.
No, it's good, it's good.
There was no design, there was no site plan review necessary for this particular one. It fell strictly to design review, which we have the design review guidelines, and y'all are the designers who created it. So that's why it was reviewed under, only under that lap. And I said the, they don't, they don't do anything in the parking lot, but streetscape and landscaping was called out specific to the guidelines that were established as well. So to my knowledge right now, the only change that they indicated here was to brick the entire outside of the structure, and they're gonna enclose the dumpster, and that's the extent of their work there.
Any discussion? I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. We got a speaker in the audience.
That's good, I just like to thank them, appreciate them for, you know, trying to make a plan.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you all, yeah. That store's under a long time. I remember when it was built.
That is a long time. I can't even remember.
I remember when it was built, Chris, too. Anyway, most of it. All those in favor?
So we got an approval?
We did.
Clear to the next site plan? PC 081319, and that was the original site plan. Owner Anderson Machine has requested site plan revision of a property located at 6920 Hoover Mason, we discussed this last month. Reason for this request revised previous, approved site plan, creating a two-phase project. The two-phase in essence is removal of the gravel that was on the initial site plan.
Right.
Removal of the detention area that was on the initial site plan, reducing the drainage coks down to zero with just a building addition, the addition of a brand-new building. Which, according to the drainage calculations Mr. Vick has provided, would reduce it down to zero, not causing any outfall for the property that would necessitate a detention on, at this point in the project. Now, any future biography change, impervious to purgus, if the addition of gravel happens to come in, or a parking area happens to come in, then that would need another review before that goes over? That's correct, yes, sure. And Mr. Vick is here, and I think Mr. Anderson is present as well, if the board has any questions for either party. Stormwater was looked at, reduced the calculations down to zero, so there's, it'll be just the building by itself in this space right here with no gravel, no change in it, probably or contrary to that.
Any discussion from the board?
Do you wish we approve this site plan?
Motion's been made to approve the site plan as submitted and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Oppose?
Thank you.
All right, number nine, old business?
Uh, no, old business, chairman.
Number 10, other business?
City's taking a favorable recommendation from the district commission to forward the proposal of changing Brownlow Street from a two-way to a one-way street. And it's up to this board to send it to the city commission with approval or disapproval. That's why it's before you tonight. Officer Jack is here, if the board has any questions about this. Dave took this on, the only reason it's before the board tonight is it requires an approval to send it to the city commission through this board, so.
Brownlow's real narrow.
Yeah, I just didn't mean that for whatever.
I make a motion that we send that to a commission for approval on change of that, doing the one-way.
You had the study before, you assured that that's exactly the way it is.
Yeah, that's exactly the way we want it.
You do have a person that wants to speak, or...
And like I said, Officer Burgett is here as well to address any concerns.
All right, we'll go ahead and, I've got one person signed up, then before we get in. Rosemary Cannon?
My name is Rose Cannon, and I have lived on Brownlow, I am 69, and I have been on Brownlow practically all of my life, over half of my life. So I don't know why y'all messing with my street, so. That's his say. I don't know what y'all trying to make one way, but coming from Main Street down that little lane will not work. I do not even tell anyone to, how to get to me, to come down Brownlow Lane to, if someone is coming to me from Nashville, say, and they need a direction, I do not tell them to come down Brownlow from Main Street. I send them to East Merchant Street, tell them to turn left on East Merchant Street. If they need something to go by, that little pink house, that pink house is my direction to go by. Turn left when you get to that pink house on East Merchant Street. Come down that street slowly, 'cause you'll miss it. If you get to the little white church on the corner of Olive and East Merchant Street, you're going too far. Come back up slowly. Turn on Brownlow, shoot straight up Brownlow, you'll be, come straight up to the left on Brownlow, but come from East Merchant Street, coming through that little alley from, it's always been a narrow lane. For one thing, if you come down that little narrow lane from Main Street, you're gonna run into that big old fence road, which is so narrow, you're not gonna be able to make that left turn by that fence. It's a big old fence right there, Runyon Hook's got a big old fence right there. You're not gonna make that left turn if you're not familiar with it. You're not gonna make it. Especially if you're a police car trying to make a quick turn, or some kind of city official, you're not gonna be able to make that quick left turn right there. So it's not a good, it's not feasible to tell somebody to come from Main Street down, turn left down, come from Main Street down Brownlow Lane. The way to come is from East Merchant Street, or go all the way down to Olive Street, and then turn up Brownlow. Now, that's kind of narrow, but it's feasible, it's more than trying to come down that narrow lane. Now, the best way to go out to Main Street is back up to Main Street, out that little narrow lane. But it's not good to come from Main Street down that way. That's my opinion of Brownlow.
The board hears your concern?
Thank you.
And you do have a place to talk to here if you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to hear Zach speak on this, give an explanation.
Assistant Chief Jack Burgett, assistant chief. So the reason we looked at this is because it's so narrow, it's hard to get certain equipment down that roadway. We asked for IMTAS, municipal technical advisory service, to look at it, and they gave their recommendation. I think part of it was that in certain areas of that roadway, it was 8.5 feet wide, we have parking spaces that have to be nine foot wide. In other places, the maximum width was 13. It's way too narrow, the midpoint standard for width of a two-lane street, and some of it is very narrow for a one-way. The reason they gave, IMTAS gave for being one-way coming from Brownlow, excuse me, I never knew it was Brownlow Street and Brownlow Lane. I always knew it as Brownlow. Coming from Brownlow to Main, the reason they were doing it that way, that it was a westwardly flow, was because of the right angled, this is a direct quote, right angled geometry of the intersection with South Main, making it virtually impossible, without crossing over. That's what they gave. What can I answer for?
Oh, I agree with you, you know, pretty much. This was not the one I actually looked at, I actually looked at two other streets, the chief handled this one, but I just got off the phone with it not 10 minutes ago. That was IMTAS's recommendation for that, not ours. We just knew it needed to be one way or one way or the other. Because if our engine one, ladder one, will not go down there. That's what we're doing, our safety concerns and stuff. I have driven a Humvee down that road and it was extremely tight, and I could not make the left-hander. And this was coming down South Main. I could not, but that's a Humvee, so. We're gonna be hard pressed to get anything other than a rescue one down there. You understand? Anything else from the board?
Well, we're just sending this study to the commission.
Correct.
Correct.
I make a motion we send this study to the commission.
It may be your recommendation.
It needs to be your recommendation.
What's the recommendation, make the little changes?
I'll second the motion and the fact. All those in favor? Aye. Oppose?
That's a positive recommendation, right?
Right. Number 11, board and staff comment?
None, thank you.
Assistant comments, they've all been done.
A year, 13 to term. I make that motion.
Motion's back, term. Thank you all.